Pay attention, it's almost time.
One minute.
I'm gonna miss Julian looking at me.
You know, you'll probably text. Probably, probably.
It's early yet. Early yet.
After I left.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the Human Services Committee. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, in the midst of the struggle for justice for all. If the clerk could take the roll, please.
Commissioner Samasco.
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Bohm.
Here.
Commissioner Trello. Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bussch.
Here.
Commissioner Beaton.
Present. Item two, any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Can I make the motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Citizens wishing to be heard this evening, we have one, Carol Miller, on the topic of EDA and Health Department.
Good evening, everybody. According with the EDA, when it comes to the EDA, all of you on this board know that there are many issues brought forth by many citizens. There is zero transparency in the fact known that Mr. Casey and Mr. Bohm have most likely signed NDAs with the latest item that they want to rush through prior to Mr. Bohm's departure. This is along with another individual. Why is it that these individuals continue to do as they please with our tax dollars, and yet we can't even attend a meeting or get updates on what's going on? It's amazing they want to take our tax dollars and build a new building and with a waterfront view, that yet there's so many vacant buildings available. Why can we not get a single email returned by Mr. Casey? Why are they hiding things that they know they're using our tax dollars for? Just remember, NDAs are FOIA available, which is going to happen. Mr. Bohm, your ways need to stop now. You think we are dumb. We are not. As far as the hiring process for the county, I would like to take and just ask why the hiring process is being scooted around. It's not being followed by the departure of a county position. Why is it that with the few people who are making decisions on the position that should be reposted and the position not hastily filled, that's what's being done? There are many concerns I have after reading the person's information online and what she stands for, especially when she's still in her residency. I ask this board to delay the hiring process and to take and redo it and do it properly. Thank you.
There are any other citizens wishing to be heard this evening? Seeing none, moving on to updates from commissioners. Anyone? Any conceptional initiatives this evening?
No.
No old business, moving on to new business. Item 7A, the kindergarten oral health assessment program, Smiles on Wheels agreement with the Health Department. Make motion to send that to the board. Thank you.
Support.
Any discussion?
Could I ask, was thinking if she would answer some questions? Again, just to verify that I have a good feeling about it. Question is, same as before, that the parents will be able to opt out, the children that go into kindergarten will not have to take the oral examination?
Correct.
Just want to make sure then that the statute law says that, do they have to opt out, or can they opt in to get into it?
It is an opt-out program.
Oh, we're gonna send any notices out?
Yes. Those notices will go home. I'll clarify that for you. If they're going home electronically, hard copy, paper, are they in newsletters? Or how each school, I think each school, it is up to them on how they do that to notify the parents, but it is an opt-out, not opt-in. Only for those who don't have the assessment done when they start school.
So they will be required to have their own dentist doing an examination?
They can. You just fill out the form, bring it into, just like you would with a vision and hearing screen or something like that, your physical form when you start kindergarten. You could have your own dentist fill that out, bring the form in as the parent, the form is online, and then this doesn't even touch you as a student.
Well, I'm concerned that the county or the state, the government, is gonna be getting information about students, their health records, whether it's for the dental or whatever it is. You will have to have a health record in regards to the dental or the kindergarten, whether they opt out or opt in. They're gonna be opting in.
What there is is a check mark, so in the Michigan Care Improvement Registry, which is your vaccine registry, right? There is a check mark box that a, say, a school secretary or a staff member who's assigned to assessing those records when they come in marks if it was complete or not complete.
Guess I'm still just a little confused. If a parent says, "I opt out, and I'm not gonna give you a record from my dentist or the family dentist," will they be able to attend public school?
Yes, absolutely. There's no exclusion tied to this at all.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Liz?
I'll ask Liz a couple of questions, just for the matter of clarity. This new law took effect December of last year, '23, right? And that law does require, it makes it a requirement for parents to have the oral assessment prior to kindergarten. That's a requirement under state law as it stands today, correct?
Correct.
And then this, the legislature also appropriated $4.3 million to cover what we're doing tonight with this mobile dental assessment thing. You're a designated agency for the Department of Health of the state, you're getting money coming down from Lansing to fund this legislation they passed, so it's not an unfunded mandate, correct?
Correct.
And then the parents, it is required either to have, I think the parent has to have the form filled out by their own dentist and given to the school, or the school will do it for them. Now, I don't, I can't tell from looking at the legislation if you're gonna do it without parental consent, I don't think so. But the school, there's a provision that says the government, the school, the state will provide the assessment if the parents don't. And I think that's what this is for here, this mobile dental unit.
Right, and I think that means through your local health department, and we are tasked with each jurisdiction with how that gets done. You know, there are some jurisdictions hiring dental hygienist, and then some going this route, some just doing referrals.
And this route, just explain real quick what you could, Liz, so people know this route is kind of like a bookmobile with a dentist in it. I mean, it's kind of a, you're gonna go around.
Yeah, that's a way to describe it. So it's a mobile dentist provider with a dental hygienist who comes in and does the assessment. It is just a quick look inside the mouth, an assessment for dental carries, any issues in the mouth. It is not like a full-on cleaning maybe that we're used to going into our dental, dental home. It is an assessment similar to your vision and hearing screens where, you know, if someone fails a vision and hearing screen, we refer them on then to their provider. So it's an assessment.
And the law requires, I believe, that the staff, either the, this mobile assessment or the school, directly notify the parent that there's need for dental treatment, just that there's a need.
I'm sorry, I'm struggling.
You're supposed to, we have to notify the school or the dental mobile unit identifies a parent whether or not there's some need for further dental work or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's kind of where it ends, too. If the parent has a dental home, then they go on. If they want information on where to refer that child, they will give out local information as well.
So I wonder if a parent, for some reason, did not, let's say, and there's actually in the statute exemption for religious exemption, if you think it violates your religious principles, you don't have to do it. That's in the statute. But if a parent generally just says, "Hey, look, I'm taking care of my own kid, I don't need the government telling me when to take my kid for dental work or how to do it," and they don't do it, it appeared to me that some of the legislation as it was proposed had a provision that they would be excluded from school, but they dropped that. That is not, is.
That is not in there.
So, but I wonder, do you know if that's a basis for like medical neglect, for medical neglect for petition for being a neglectful parent?
No, I don't know that for certain, but I would assume from my experience that that would not be indicative of that.
And that wouldn't be something the Health Department would want to do or get involved with? If they, you do the form, you check the box. If you don't, they're still gonna come in and you're gonna leave it at that.
You know, and we've talked about, right, that's a parental right. It's a parental right not to have a dental screen or take care of dental hygiene and health the way they choose. They can opt into the, you know, or opt out of the program. They can have the program if they choose it, and if they don't want anything to do with it, that's not a problem either. But there are people who do and will take advantage of it.
Do you know, Liz, is there any provision for, if you go over the cost, like the $65,000, does the state pick that up, or does it come back to the county or the school district? Any idea on how that works?
No, we, this is a hard number that we're receiving, the $60,079 for the fiscal year, and no, there is nothing beyond that, should those costs exclude. And we're working very closely with Smiles on Wheels, with regular meetings, and I don't anticipate that to go over. They know they are not to go over that and what we can pay them. And there was some administrative costs kept back from the Health Department, for the Health Department as well, that 10%.
Covers your cost to manage the program. Thank you.
Any other questions for Liz?
Just one more thing.
Sure.
I actually think it's good they have Smiles on Wheels and looking at our kids, but I just want to have the parents be able to make that decision if they so choose, even if it's a small minority. Parents should be in charge of their children, not the government.
All right, thank you, Liz. We have a motion in support on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the Medical Director Contract Approval. Make motion to send it to the board. Thank you.
Liz, can I get you back up there, please? Oh, we got a motion, is there a second?
There is none.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Nope.
I'll second it.
So, take, so obviously, we're looking to replace this position. Dr. Nevin submitted his resignation, I think as of January 31st.
July.
July 31st, yeah. July 31st? And so this position, I guess, we didn't go through another posting, this was a person that.
Previously applied, when Dr. Nevin applied. So this is someone the Designated Committee had previously interviewed. She was certainly a very close second to Dr. Nevin, we all agreed to that. Over the last year, she has completed her residency when she applied last year. What she did was return back to school for an additional fellowship in occupational health and environmental health. So she took that time to gain more education and more clinical experience, because that is really one of the things when we were looking at that we thought Dr. Nevin kind of outweighed a little bit on, was that experience that was there with the one-on-one patient.
I guess my question to you would be, what's the drawback if we were to post this position, spend the next 60 days, 90 days, however long that that takes, and then see where it takes us? What's, what is the?
Well, it's very difficult to find qualified candidates. If you recall, they need a preventive medicine degree, which is different, you know, than when you're becoming a physician. So they need a preventive medicine degree for their doctor side of things. They also need an additional Masters in Public Health. There was only two candidates that had that at our last interview round previous to that. I wasn't in on the hiring of the previous medical director. It's difficult, it's hard across the state to get individuals in, and we thought it was a good opportunity. I reached out, she was still available, she had liked our interview, had liked us, has met with us, and so we went from there. We, I talked to Carrie, I talked to Legal, if this is something we kind of can do, and I think for this position, it would be appropriate to move someone in that we found as a great candidate. The other drawback would be, there are some lapses in care we don't want to happen. You have to be approved from the State of Michigan. So we went through that preliminarily, right? Does she qualify? You have to send transcripts, you have to send licensing information. So we have to get that. There's timing of services. When our last medical director left abruptly, we had a two-week period where we couldn't service clients, and that was really bothersome to all of us. Then, in addition, we had to wait for a second pharmacy kind of rider on Dr. Nevin's DEA license, which takes weeks to come through. And that allows you to, kind of like a pharmacy where you can hand out prescriptions within the Health Department to those who have positive test results, instead of scripting them out, you can hand it out right away and treat them right on site. So there is the possibility for some over gaps in service that I really think we don't want to go near.
Liz, is this contract any different than Dr. Nevin's?
No. Actually, we did remove, I had legal review it, and what was removed was what Dr. Nevin had put in there specifically. As you recall, he had a, he had a full-time job doing legal consultation work medically, and he had, we had some provisions in there that nothing would contradict with the county. So we put that in and we removed that. The only other thing would be a wage. That went up because of a 3% increase that we all received.
Thank you. Any other questions for Liz?
I guess I have a whole lot. If my memory is correct, the last time we posted this, we got applicants within two months. So to say it was hard to get applicants, I can't, I'm gonna disagree with you on that because people did apply for it. $109,000, 100, and I'm going from memory, I don't have it in front of me, $131 per hour, minimum 16 hours per week. And I got a question for Carrie, that that's gonna be the maximum, 109, whether 30 hours are required, correct, on the contract? Or they're gonna get paid that if they work above and beyond 16 hours?
This is a part-time employee, so they're paid an hourly rate for the hours they work. So if they work more than 16 hours, if something happens, then they're paid for the hours they work. It's not a salaried position.
Who dictates the hours?
Liz does in the Health Department. Certainly within her budget.
Okay. So potentially, if it's dictated this person needed to work 32 hours, it could be a $220,000 job resume now, if they worked it.
Potentially. I don't see that happening. I can tell you, over the last two years in this role, 16 hours has been appropriate. There have been times maybe with an additional outbreak or something that needed another meeting or this or that. There was a couple hours here and there that we allowed for. We also allow some flex time in that, to not go over that. We're very conscientious about that budget.
Also, Dr. Nevin, he's on contract, and he said that he's gonna stick around till we get the position filled, correct?
I'm sorry?
Dr. Nevin, our current, he said, put in his letter of resignation, but he said he would still fill that position until the position does get filled.
Yep, we had a conversation, it's in the letter.
So if it potentially took six months to fill this and advertise the job like we normally do, he would still be here, so there would be no lapse that you're talking about?
There wouldn't be, but again, I think we have a very qualified candidate, and I am looking for no lapse in what we have planned right now.
Well, I'm gonna, I think we should have posted like we have in the past and get up qualified applicants. I'm not sure that she'd reapply, so she, potentially, you talked, I haven't talked with her, but potentially, I'd want to ask her specific questions myself, but we're not interviewing. Dr. Nevin was here and did answer our questions for her.
I think he came at the same time as we, as we presented the contract, he was interviewed, Lisa was on the, as the Commissioner representative on the Hiring Board, and then, yeah, she did apologize for not being able to be here. She has a speaking engagement at Wayne State tonight, but she was disappointed not to be here. She also said, "You're welcome to reach out, and if you want to have those conversations with her, she's happy to do it."
Well, I, I think what Dr. Nevin did, and made it, made himself public, gave a history of himself to the public and the commissioners in a public format, much better than me calling up on the phone, and then I try to explain to other commissioners, things are gonna be third-hand, second, you know, third, fourth hand, and there's gonna be some translation lost or misinterpretation if I was to call her up individually, or each one of us call her up individually. So I have concerns. I think that there will be no lapse if we were to postpone this, or at least advertise it like we normally do. If she ends up being the single one, then we'll have that for consideration. That's my position on this.
Liz, is it, is it correct that she's planning on attending the next Board of Commissioners meeting? That it was strictly because of the, her previous engagement, that that is why she's not here this evening?
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions for Liz?
I'd like to make a record of a couple things if I could. My concern on this, I got, I saw this, it was on the posted agenda last Friday, it's the first I'd ever heard of this person that was put on for committee. And I looked at it, I did what I could do to search out information on what she does and who she is and so forth, and some of the aspects of preventive medicine and how the job application, I asked, I think our Health Director posted that for me, I appreciate that, so I can see what our Health Director, the job duties were as compared to, there's a state template out there from the Health Department, State Health or whatever. So those are kind of the things I looked at, and I've been around a long time, like a lot of us, and, you know, it seems, I think, Liz, have we gone through, we had Mercantant, was there another medical director between Mercantant and Nevin? So we've gone through three medical directors in two years or whatever the number is, and that's an inordinate turnover as far as I'm concerned. But with the public clamor, I mean, I came to some of the meetings back before I even decided to run, to get back on the board, and we've got to have a medical director that really fits the community, that's gonna fit the temperament. And I, and when Dr. Nevin got up and spoke, as Mr. Rushing was saying, what, the things that he said, I was very, very settled with, very satisfied with, that he was neutral on vaccinations. He would look at all information, good, bad, indifferent. He was very much in favor of parental rights, as you'd said, this other candidate also agrees with that, those types of things. But it helped me, I think, as Mr. Rushing says, to have him appear before we'd make a final vote, at least one time, to get a sense of maybe who they are, you know, you meet people, you just see them, you talk to them. But on a broader scale, I did, I did email Dr. Nevin this afternoon and asked him if he would have any problems sticking around, and he wrote back at 5:02 kindly enough, he said, "It would be no convenience." I said, "Will you stick around for this month, any problem, with any inconvenience you at all?" Because I think he had some personal issues or whatever that maybe caused him to leave, and he writes back, "It would be no inconvenience, and it would be my pleasure to remain in my position for that period of time. In order for the county to be satisfied with the selection of my replacement, my understanding at the time of submitting my resignation, that the selection was to be open to a competitive search, subject to the concurrence of the commission or committee." And this commission, under the law, is the local governing entity, that that's our supervisory role, and I don't feel tonight, I can't just pass this on to full board, I don't feel comfortable in my supervisory role to know her, know more about her. I've looked at some things she has out on Wayne State, she's an alumni, she is involved with certain activities with Wayne State, but there's other things, you know, I'd like to know what questions were asked during this process that I wasn't on the board two years ago, what questions were asked, you know, what their philosophies are on things like.
I believe you were here when we interviewed Dr. Nevin, and she went through that round, because that was only last year, right? And Dr. Nevin's only, was only here six months.
Okay, I may have been, I don't recall that, I could have been here.
You were here.
Okay, well, I trust you, I trust you, so, but in any event, I do want to see it go out a bit, I'd like to see it put out and take some time to look at it before we just pass it on. I know Liz, I've talked to Liz, I've talked to her administrator, we were gonna talk, but we didn't. I know Liz is very favorable, said she interviewed well, she would like this person to be the candidate, but I think as some of the citizens said and some of the other issues, I think it'd be prudent to put it out, get some other interest. If there's no other interest, so be it. If there's other interest, at least we have the opportunity to see what else is out there and give the community time to do whatever they want to do, to watch how we do what we do. There's no urgency to fill it as far as I'm concerned. So that would be a no to pass it on to full board.
We could, we could post it and then take, what, 30-day period normally, is that how long that job postings last for?
They range from two weeks to department head positions or sometimes longer, but our typical posting is two weeks.
I put it out there at least a month or two, this is a highly professional, I wouldn't just, you're not hiring the janitor, you know, you're hiring a doctor, so let them take a look at it. No problem with janitors, but.
We have phenomenal janitors here just here.
I know they do, we have one in, we have one here, so I apologize to that. So that's my, I would not vote to send it to full board, I think we should take no action and then put that out and see what we get to come in, and it would give me time to get more comfortable perhaps with the one applicant. If she re applies, we could have an opportunity perhaps to have some of these conversations, and I'd be better able to do what I think I need to do. So that's, that's my position.
Any other questions? There's a motion on the floor. Would you like to keep it on the floor? Okay, so you don't have to take action in two weeks either.
We can take no action, or you can take action, that's up to you.
So would you like, oh, the motion was to move it to full board? Okay, so all in favor to move it to full board? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, so we will not move it forward to full board.
I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So moving on to 7C, the St. Clair County Library Tech Ops Specialty Vehicles Contract for Library Mobile Outreach Vehicle.
Make motion, send it.
Make motion, send it to full board.
Thank you. Support.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any other human services matters this evening? Hearing none. Item nine, for information only, we did receive the Health Department August Points of Interest.
Motion received and filed. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 10, receiving file packets. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Support. Meeting adjourned.
It's called, St. Clair County Judiciary Public Safety Committee to Order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Trello? Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Support.
Any questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Citizens to be heard. I've got one, Carol Miller.
I'm on a roll tonight. This is regarding animal control, so this would be going to carry. I never heard back if there was an educational piece placed in with animal control for the law enforcement agencies that service our county, whether it be city police, township, sheriff, et cetera. This was asked back in, back in the springtime, I believe, or even last year, regards to a deceased dog that the Port Iron City Police Department picked up that was hit by a car. They took it to Animal Control, they didn't know the process, and they placed the deceased dog in the dumpster. The dumpster was emptied out by the garbage people at first thing in the morning, before Animal Control opened, and the dog was then placed in the county landfill. So, I didn't hear anything back if there's been a process in place to educate the different law enforcements, or give them updates on the process to do, if it's after hours, and they don't know where to put the dog. My next question is, why don't we have the Director of Animal Control here giving presentations and updates? They have a substantial budget, and I actually asked her on Facebook, and she says she's not allowed to come, and I don't understand why. People are very much animal-driven in this county, so I'd like to see her at least come and give a presentation, if not twice a year, quarterly. I just don't understand why that's not happening. When you have, you know, Sheriff Department, you have Liz, thankfully, I'm glad to see her coming, they give presentations, so why can't Animal Control give a presentation? Also, the last thing, I brought up about a microchipping station. I know they're planning on moving to the day-night watch. I don't know when that's going to happen, but just this past couple weeks, there was a dog that was lost in the St. Clair area, beautiful little dog. People would not help it. Some ladies were putting out food and water for it, but one of my friends, who was involved in our volunteer group, literally went out there before a major storm, and coaxed that dog with three pounds of salami. Animal Control did not go out despite calls, because it was after their time that they had in, they had to leave it whenever time their shift was up. But she got that dog. She wanted to take the dog to get it checked for a microchip. There's no place to take it. She had to wait till the following Monday to take that dog to get a microchip. She still has the dog. Animal Control knows. She will not take it to Animal Control, because they're so full. That's another issue. So, I know Kent County actually advertised, they have a second microchipping station, so I'd like to know where that is in the process. Thank you.
Moving on to updates. Do we have any updates tonight? No conceptual initiatives or old business, so moving on to new business. 2025 Secondary Road Patrol Grant Agreement.
Make motion, send it to full board.
Support.
Any questions on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Moving on to inmate, medical, and mental health service agreement addendums.
I'll make a motion to move that to full board.
Support.
Any questions on that one? Because we do have the Under Sheriff here today to answer any questions. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Probate Court MDHSS Funds Contract.
Make motion, send it to full board.
Second.
Any questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Huron House Probation Resident Service Contract, Benman A.
Make a motion, send it to full board. Support.
Any questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Appointment of District Court Magistrate Dennis Ricker for Final Action.
Make a motion for Final Action. Support.
Any questions?
Yeah. Could I ask Carrie just a brief description of this? As best you can.
One of the court magistrates has retired, so the courts went through a selection process to replace it, and the Board of Commissioners are required to affirm that appointment.
Any other questions?
Just one question, Carrie, in the Final Action aspect, I'm sure there's, they've always had two magistrates, and I believe one was actually down in Marina City. So, the Final Action, because they need to get that filled right away, is that...
Yes, the prior magistrate left at the end of July, so now they're currently down to one, and I believe the selection process took a little bit longer. They were initially hoping to have it on your July agenda.
I will say, I know Dennis Ricker, he came up here from Macomb County, worked for Mike Welling as a prosecutor, and it was a pleasure working with him as a prosecutor. He was always very fair and knowledgeable, and I think he'll be a good, I think he'd be a good magistrate. He's, he'll know how to do search warrants, he'll know how to do all kinds of things that the magistrates need to do, and he's familiar with the system. So, I like to see things like this, where we take people from our community, because he moved here, and then move them up into the, you know, promote them as they go. So, I do know Dennis, and if he was here, I'd congratulate him, but I don't see him, so that's it.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Actually, roll call.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call, then.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Yes.
No other public, judiciary, or public safety matters? Hearing none, moving on to receiving file packets.
Motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjournment.
Motion.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that me? Okay, all right. So, give me a, oh, Dave's got it. Yep, you gotta go all the way down, Dave. I'm not coming to meet you. No, I want the gavel. I mean, this is my one chance to shine here. Come on. Very much. We call to order the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental Public Works Committee for September 5th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes, here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Trello? Commissioner Rushing?
Still here.
Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Samasco?
Is that Commissioner Chairperson Samasco, or just Sam... Oh, that's okay, well, let's skip over that. Here. Additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
Make motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Dave, no slips for me on this one, anybody, nobody? Environmental. Updates, any updates? No updates. Conceptual Initiatives, number five, none. Old business, none. New business, item A, Resolution 24-15, approving the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Recreational Passport Grant Program Agreement, North Channel County Park. Final action.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion or comment? I would just say that I'm familiar with that one, and it goes to North Channel as part of the build-out over there, and it was a matching grant, and they're excited to get that, so they can do some upgrades and move forward with that, so. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Final action.
I'm sorry, is that a roll call then? Okay, roll, all right. Roll call, vote.
You're good with voice?
For final action, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a grant.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. B, landfill air compliance service contract. You have motion?
Motion, send it to full board.
Second.
The motion is second on the landfill. Any discussion, questions, comments? Matt, did you want to talk about this? I see you're here. Is anything you want to let us know about that, or... Why don't you just give us your two cents worth, since you're here, to let us know what that is, and what it's supposed to, since we have issues, you know, going on with the landfill, what that's for, and...
Good evening, commissioners. As you may or may not be aware, we have a number of different permits and licenses for different areas of the landfill, for stormwater, for air quality, for emissions, for operating for bioreactor, et cetera, et cetera. So, one of these areas is air compliance. So, this contract in front of you is for a three-year period recommendation for Environmental Information Logistics LLC to conduct these services. They would be doing permitting and recording for air services, just in general, for the landfill. They currently, these services are currently being provided under our NSA with CTI and Associates. EIL is actually been working as a vendor to CTI to do these services for us for the last couple years. So, they know our facility, they know our permits, they know everything extremely well. It's just simply to break those services out on a separate contract and pay them directly.
Does that save us, I suppose, some markup costs or something, or how is that, how does that benefit us?
Well, benefits it's by, there is no markup. The markup actually was quite very small with CTI.
Okay.
But, yeah, we would save on that incremental cost.
Thank you, Matt. Any further questions, Matt? No? Okay, you have a motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Contract approval, item C, Meeden-Hunt Runway 1028, justification study.
Make motion, send it to full board.
Support.
Any questions or comments?
Our airport directors here, if anybody has questions for them.
I don't, I don't, I don't have any questions. If you must speak, you're welcome to say a few words, but, okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item eight, A, Smith Creek Landfill Activity Report, 8A, April 24th, gas-to-energy volume and data comparison.
Make the motion for items A and B.
To move roads, to file and accept, or do we have to move that to full board? That's just file and accept. Receive and file. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item nine, other environmental public works matters.
I guess that fall, the road in Memphis is under construction. They're putting in some fantastic gutters, and should be done around the 9th of September, and they'll have a new road there. So, that was a corroboration with Riley Township, Wales Township, and the city of Memphis.
Horrible stretch of road.
Yes, it was, or is still, but...
Anything else? Okay, item 10, information only, monthly park financial documents.
Motion to receive and file. Support.
Have a motion, second. Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. You have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Support.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion adjourned, please.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. That was exhausting. This one's just for Georgia Baldwin.
Whatever. That's why you don't give me these things. I'm giving it to him. I'm giving it to him already. I need more women in my life, I'm telling you.
Clearly.
I do, clearly, you know? Have to excuse Steve, he's a little slow at times. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to Order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Present.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Trello? Commissioner Vandembosh?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. This time, we got citizens to be heard, and I'll start off with Trey.
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening. So, I wanted to highlight just a few things that I've noticed in this, in my experience with our EDA. Mr. Bohm was kind enough to set up a meeting for me to have a dialogue with him, because I was interested in, what can we do for our nonprofits, and our churches, and our community that are suffering, and that are going through, and really don't have the skill set to actually survive? Now, real quick, off topic, do I really sound this good on the speaker?
No karaoke.
Okay, that's interesting. But this is the real question, because when I talked to Mr. Casey, he didn't have an answer, because he said, "This is not something that they actually deal with, per se." But in 10 years of being in this community, I realized that this community has been driven by the local people, individuals that run nonprofits, that have dreams, different ideas, and specifically, churches. We do a lot of the work that people don't realize, that needs to be done, that has to be done. Regardless of your affiliation, if you go to a church, or you're not involved with the church, if all the churches go away, you'll notice an extreme moral decline, and also, a lot of things that normally are done for free, and because of a sense of call, they won't exist. My encouragement is that you all will inspire, connect, and partner with individuals, and find ways in which we can keep that healthy peace in our community, because there are two areas that I believe must exist in our community. Law enforcement, because no matter how you feel about an officer, if you can't call an officer, you'll feel the effects. And if you don't have churches to do the things that people don't want to do, you'll definitely feel it in your local community, because everything can be legislated. Some things have to be done because a sense of call. And secondly, the other issue that I've had is that, besides my desire to have a very, very nice set of apps, I would have never known that Jeff Bohm was on the Commission, and I would have never known how to have a conversation with you all, and dialogue with you all, and figure out ways in which I can put my needs before you, and figure out how we can engage. Can I also encourage that we find a way to create good, healthy means of communication with your hidden jewels in the community, because you never know when one of the ideas we have actually might be good, might be helpful, and we might actually be able to further your agenda, and that costs you so much. Thank you.
We're gonna have another one, but Trey, we normally don't respond, but give me a call. Got my number now. Don Falk, please.
Good evening. I'd like to speak tonight about a proposal to put a 40-acre data mining facility in China Township. The proposed facility would be on King Road in China Township by the Pine River Elementary School, which has approximately 450 students. And also, there's students there at that school with special needs. It has been, I've been told that Dan Casey from the EDA, along with outgoing Board of Commissioners Chair, Jeff Bohm, are trying to fast-track this deal with the current China Township Supervisor, John Golin, before Jeff and John leave their current elected positions in January. Supervisor John Goland before Jeff and John leave their current elected positions in January. All three of these men, I've been told, have signed NDAs in regards to this project with no regard to how this diet, data mining facility would affect the children at the elementary school. Since they've signed these NDAs, they can give no information to the public about this proposed development. It's like Nancy Pelosi famously said, "We have to pass this bill in order to see what's in it." I believe that no public official who's been elected into office should be signing NDAs. After all, who is then the elected official's a master? It's not the constituents who elected the politician to represent their views. The citizens of Chinatownship deserve to have environmental studies conducted to see how this will affect the citizens of Chinatownship mentally and physically. There are many reports out there about the many adverse effects of the noise generated by the cooling fans needed to cool the mining computers. Some data mining facilities use as much as 5 million gallons of water per day of groundwater for their evaporative cooling systems. By contrast, recently in Michigan, a Nestle bottling company came under fire for wanting to withdraw 576,000 gallons of water per day. Detroit Edison will hand some profitably by selling enormous amounts of energy to the data mining company. Heck, DTE would probably even tap into Bell River's cooling water supply from the St. Clair River. How convenient is that for that data mining company? How will this affect our electric bills? They won't be going down. DTE has shut down five or more power plants in the last 20 years. And also, let's not forget that Lansing wants to be 100% clean energy use, 100% clean energy use in electricity by 2040. How will these facilities affect those goals? There are so many questions that need to be answered before this project can proceed. At the very least, a public hearing needs to be done to provide information, both pro and con, about this project to the public. Then let the public decide if they want a data mining facility in Chinatownship by the elementary school. I bet the parents of these students would say no. Commissioner Bone and Supervisor Goland, please remember your oath that you took when you swore into office. Thank you.
Okay, Linda Schwafer.
I wanted to address the commission. There's been a lot of talk about Bitcoin mining. It was a new term for me. We became educated, data centers, et cetera. I have attended every meeting. I make it my business to be, you know, updated on things that are going on in Chinatownship. And I attended the meeting where a presentation was made. We had, it started out to be Saber 56. Now, I understand it's a completely different company name. I'm really kind of, I mean, at a loss, I guess, because we have not heard really much. I think there are some things going on in the background. I do believe that there has been discussions with John Goland, EDA, you know, some of the powers that be. I believe he's also talked to the DTE assessor, trying to, you know, get information on all of that. But I can tell you, after I sat there and listened to a well-presented program by Saber 56, now we don't know who the company is. And I can tell you for certain that the whole board is not in unison as to wanting that facility in the township. And furthermore, there needs to be a whole lot more research, more information given to, not only to the board, but to the people that live in the township. And I would also reiterate the concerns about it being, you know, even remotely being considered that site by the Pine River School. And I have done some research on my own and what I hear and the fallout from the noise, the pollution, the things that can happen to the people as a result of the sound, the noise, it's not a pretty picture. So, I, and I'm also a bit surprised because that it would even come up here because no one has made any decision at the local. And that's where it really starts, not here at the county, at the local. So, I guess I would just advise all of you to just stay tuned and we will have more information and a decision will be made, but it will be made with the education and the information that needs to be done, I pray. Thank you.
Eileen Tesh.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to say, Jeff Bone, thank you for your years of service. And even though we don't always agree, I wish you well and I'll never forget all that you did for me when I was trying to clean the swamp down there in Algenack. But it appears the swamp is back. We've been attending Algenack City Council meetings and we were advised, I believe, last Tuesday. I could be mistaken, but what I heard from our city manager when asked how come nobody knew about this brownfield development project going on with Corcat and the 52 homes? And she said, "Well, we were under the impression that Jeff Bone and Mr. Van De Bosch and the famous Dan Casey all knew about it." Well, I didn't find out about it until Steve Samasco happened to be coming down to Algenack a month or so ago, asked me if I knew anything about it. He was there for a graduation party. I got in the car, went over there and checked it out and started talking to the neighbors and it was quite eye-opening. So, what concerns me, obviously, is that the Algenack City Council, without any presentation of the brownfield development until after they voted, to give away 24 years of taxes and the other funding that's going into that project. I know it's tabled now, but we're very concerned about the lack of information and transparency. So I would certainly encourage you, Mr. Van De Bosch, to get to the next meeting because your friend, the city council, Mr. Bimbis, he wanted to know where you were on Tuesday and if you knew about it. So, we have a lot of questions down there in Algenack about your knowledge and why this was discussed in November and here we are in September and we're just learning about it. Thank you.
Okay, I have no other citizens wishing to be heard.
Hey, Dave, Warren Head gave a slip here, went down.
I can't hear you, Steve.
Warren Head gave a slip, it went around. I thought it went to public safety, but maybe you could do it on.
I missed it.
Okay, I didn't know that was...
Warren Head.
My name is Warren Head. I ran for the position of sheriff of St. Clair County. I did lose in the primary. It was a very narrow defeat, what I've been told, being a first-time runner in this type of a field. I had no idea. However, I thought it was interesting, the votes that were tallied later. However, after a narrow defeat, I took time to reflect on this and my request, and my quest to become the sheriff of St. Clair County. I still would like to have that position in St. Clair County. So I did decide to file for write-in candidate because although 23,000 people did vote, I received numerous calls from many Republicans and Democrats that encouraged me to continue in this fight. So, for that reason, I think that I can still fulfill that position and I continue to run as the sheriff's people for St. Clair County. And I thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other citizens wishing to be heard? Okay, we'll move on. Any updates?
David, I don't...
No, that was...
Dave, I don't know if this is the right time or we would do it a little later in the agenda, but I know at our next meeting on September 19th, there's two conflicts that are going to be happening. I know Georgia's got one. There's a couple of different events that are happening on the same day as our meeting. If the board would consider moving the meeting up to 4:00 start on that date?
Well, other than, I have concerns. Other than the health officer, everything else is fairly vanilla. But if we change the time from 4:00 to 6:00, and is anybody else, if I could ask, is anybody else going to the EDA meeting besides yourself?
I'm going to, it's the YMCA's, the Y M C A is at 6:00. So I'll be attending that. I'll be attending that.
The EDA?
No, the YMCA.
Okay, and what time is that at?
6:00.
6:00, so you're gonna have three commissioners.
So we would have been missing two commissioners anyways.
Right.
Correct.
If we do it at 4:00, then everybody should be able to attend.
Well, I'm concerned about the residents because that's pretty, in my opinion, the position for the health officer is...
That didn't go to full board. That didn't go to full board.
It's not going to full board.
That did not go to full board.
At table. The health director?
It failed.
Where were you? Okay, I, well, I was gonna go on updates and ask who voted what. Was it, because I was assuming, because, you know, I can't hear, I thought it was 4:2. So it did not go to...
It's not on for the 26th. It will not be on for the 26th.
19. It will not be on for our next full board meeting.
And that satisfies my concerns. I have no problem with 4:00.
All right.
It's on each agenda, but yeah.
It's on the website as well on the calendar of events.
It'll be taken care of.
I certainly don't have any objection to it. I mean, there's three people want to go to something and...
We can do it as asked as a formal time change if you want in the agenda or if you guys are just fine.
I'm happy to do it right now under updates. If you want to make a motion to have a 4:00 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Okay, any other updates from any commissioners? Conceptual initiatives? We have none, no old business. And now we have a lot of new business. So we're gonna go to 7A. Commissioner Rushing, District 6, American Rescue Plan Project, St. Clair County, Road Commission, Wales Township Road Project. Have a motion.
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7B, contract amendment approval request, MGT of American Consulting LLC.
Make motion, send to the full board.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7C, Commissioner Baldwin, District 2, American Rescue Plan Act Project, Birchville Township Water Line Extension.
Make motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7D, 2024 General Fund Budget Adjustments. Have a motion.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7E, Commissioner Bone, District 5, American Rescue Plan Project, Ira Township Fire Department Radio Purchase.
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7F, point-to-point wireless links.
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7G, firewall replacements. Have a motion.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. And I did go to the hearing doctor today, I'm getting new hearing aids.
That's good, thank you for the update.
7H, Commissioner Baldwin, District 2, American Rescue Plan Project, McLaren Port Heron Generator Parking Lot Resurfaced, Yale VA Clinic.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7I, contract approval, administration building exterior wall in skylight repair, national restoration.
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7J, contract approval, administration building boiler replacement, Miller Bolt.
Make a motion to move that to full board? Support.
Any discussion?
Just one, a quick one. I was talking to Carrie today, kind of related to this, but the amount of work that we were actually able to get done, I think we did the roof on the courthouse, we did the roof here, we did little library roofs, chillers, spent a lot of money on a lot of things that would have cost, you know, I'd say substantial amount.
They rounded the capital improvement list anyway.
Yeah, the capital improvements on the buildings, the opportunity to move the health department over and stuff, so all things that essentially were necessary and are gonna put these facilities probably in pretty good shape for the next 20 years to come, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7K, contract agreement, administration building chiller number two replacement, Miller Bolt.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7L, contract approval, Sheriff's Office Intervention Center Refrigeration System Replacement, Watson Brothers.
Make a motion to move that to full board?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7M, Resolution 24-16, Retirement System Ordinance Amendments.
Make motion, send to the full board.
Support.
Any discussion?
You're gonna have to have someone else sit on that board, so, somebody else.
Not till January.
I don't know how many more I can go to, so...
You want to break somebody in?
One comment, I went to the, oh, the actuary, I'm sure Carrie missed last couple of meetings, but I think we were 86% funded in pension and 84% in health. When I became board chairman, we were staring at like three to five years and we were gonna be out of money for the healthcare, so did a lot of work to get that and to really right the ship and to be 84% funded and that's pretty darn good. So, those can be an 800-pound gorilla that, you know, boards can inherit and this board's, the new board moving forward, is not gonna be inheriting a, you know, pension mess.
What's the number on the pension side?
I think it was 86 and 84, or 88, something, yeah.
Check my memory. When I got elected county commissioner, I was put on the retirement healthcare board. It was at about 2 million then and it's in excess of 60 million now. I think it's 65 million. So that's done and I believe the actual retirement care, it's about a quarter billion, isn't it? Carrie?
Yeah, approximately.
So, we are very well-funded in comparison to just about any other municipality, any county in the state of Michigan. We're right up there at the top. So we have been taking care of the employees' retirement and health cares. Any other discussion?
Just a comment for Carrie then, like, and a lot of what Jeff talked about on righting the ship and getting that in order, that was a result of negotiations with our employee contracts on medical benefits, a lot of that, or was there something else that played in? Because I know we keep adjusting that on there.
So, the medical benefits, the changes for retirees, those are not negotiated because they're no longer covered under the bargaining units. However, we did institute an employee contribution towards that to help with the funding.
Thank you.
And if I can, correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of these counties or municipalities have unfunded mandates and with what we did around 2010, when I got on the board, we eliminated the eight-year, you get full healthcare regardless if you went someplace else, so we eliminated that. That's been cut way back. And also the retirement, we went to a 457, so any new hirees are not gonna be getting a county retirement. At some point, we won't be paying any retirement.
Yep, that's correct. The eight-year vesting for healthcare, that ended prior to 1999 because when I came on in 99, it was the 20-year vesting and the county began closing their pension plan in 2009.
But the sheriff's department still has that, isn't that correct? We'll have that legacy cost for some time with the sheriff's deputies?[1765.63] We'll have that legacy cost for some time with, with the sheriff's deputies?
Yes, the two sheriff's deputies that are, units that are 312 eligible, still have pension benefits, but not retiree healthcare benefits.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7N, excess workers' compensation coverage Midwest employees casualty.
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7O, contract approval, community education network fiber lease.
Motion. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7P, Commissioner Vanden Bosch, District 7, American Rescue Plan Project, Clay Township Fire Department Radios.
Make motion.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7Q, Commissioner Beeden, District 3, American Rescue Plan Act Project, St. Clair County Community Mental Health, Mobile Mental Health Vehicle.
Make a motion, send that to full board.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. 7R, Commissioner Beeden, District 3, American Rescue Plan Act Project, Sandborne Grashit Memorial Home ADA Bathrooms.
Make a motion, send that to full board. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. At this time, we'll move on to eight. At this time, anybody have any other Ways and Means Matters? Seeing none, I need a motion for information only, letter from Michigan State Historic Preservation Office regarding the U.S. Coast Guard Cutter scramble.
Motion, receive and file.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. I need a motion to receive and file.
So moved. Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.